It's seven o'clock, Mayor Posola will not be here. He will try to get back here later. He wanted you to know that he's in New Jersey, attending his granddaughter's prom. And he's going to try to get back. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America. In the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, the religion of this.
May I have a motion for the minutes that of April the 2nd, the meeting that we held?
Semud.
Second.
We heard the motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Ayes, ayes. The motion is carried. A motion for the receiving of the financial report.
Semud.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. The motion is carried. We now have a report from Southern Trend Environmental Services. Ken Bennett.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to give you a brief status report on the water and wastewater facilities for the last couple of months, February, March. We performed very well, considering circumstances with the weather and everything, made it somewhat difficult, but we were in compliance all time and did real well. We suffered minimal damage and it's not bad that winter's over. Of course, last night, I wasn't sure about. We have gotten a lot of things done at the facilities, made a lot of repairs. We had inspection today with MDE at the wastewater treatment plant on the solid hearing portion of the plant and everything went real well. Some of the big items, let you know that the town did the dredging of the inlet to the raceway to the water treatment facility. That dredging was completed, went real well, and we're happy about that. We also completed the testing of the private wells located down on Frenchtown Road along with well four and some of their other production wells. That testing, groundwater level testing was completed this past month. Some of the other things that we've done is we had 60 tons of bio solids removed this past weekend, Friday, and it was a big item, getting 60 tons from the plant that was in We've had some minor things that we did our annual maintenance on the UV system at the wastewater treatment plant, which is a big item to complete, so I'm pleased about that. So we've been pretty busy. That's about all I have to talk about.
Any questions from anybody on the board?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for your presence. This time we will have the town administrator who has six items on his report, that some have been reduced.
The first item I have is proclamation National Bike Month. I'll read it to the record. Proclamation by the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton joining bicycling, safety and education association and the League of American Bicyclists in celebrating the month of May 2014 as National Bike Month. Whereas Americans in record numbers are turning to a bicycle as a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation as well as an excellent form of recreation. Whereas millions of Americans can experience a choice of bicycling this May through educational programs, commuting events, trail work days, helmet promotions and charity rides. And whereas bicycle clubs, schools, local departments of parks and recreation, police departments, hospitals, corporations, civic groups throughout our state will be promoting bicycling as a wholesome activity as well as an environmentally friendly alternative to automobiles during the month of May. Whereas the mayor commissioner of the town of Elton emphasized and encouraged increasing use of non-motorized transportation in its many forms and functions. Now therefore, the mayor commissioner of the town of Elton do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Bike Month. And the town of Elton encourage residents of Elton and surrounding areas participate in bicycling activities.
Having heard the proclamation for the Bike Month, can I get a motion to accept?
Semud.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. The motion is carried. Next item.
I think the tires of my bicycle are sore and they were flat, so I gotta get working on that. Proclamation Tourism Month. Whereas the travel and tourism industry in Elton, Cecil County and the state of Maryland is vital to our economic stability and growth and contributes to our quality of life. And whereas every citizen benefits from our tourism assets and the revenue generated by tourism dollars. And whereas annual tourism generates millions of dollars in revenue, more than 2,300 jobs in Cecil County and $21 million in state and local taxes. And whereas tourism revenue is generated without the expense of providing services resulting in reduction of burden placed on taxpayers. And whereas I call upon all citizens of Elton to take pride in our town, in our county tourism attractors and celebrate the significant positive impact that tourism dollars have on all of us. Now therefore, I just astounded by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Elton and behalf of the board commissioners and citizens of the community do hereby proclaim the month of May 2014 as Tourism Month.
Is there a motion to receive Tourism Month as a proclamation?
Semud.
Second.
Second.
You have probably been moved in second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. The motion is carried. Next item.
Next item I have is Annexation Resolution 8-1-2014. As I previously briefed the board, the purpose of this annexation is to annex three parcels which are listed on map 315, tax map 315 as parcels 723, 724 and 726. Currently 724 is the land on which well number one is located, actually 1R, a replacement well is located. On parcel 723, well 2R is located, which will build a wellhouse there. And 726 is adjacent parcel to a well, I mean parcel number 723, but it's unimproved and we will keep it unimproved. The purpose of this annexation is to bring this property into town. It's associated with the Holly Hall of Terrace subdivision, been that way for many, many years, but it's outside the corporate limits. Technically, we want it inside, corporate limits to control the development of that property. Once the board accepts it for introduction, I will send copies of the resolution and the annexation plan to the county and to the Maryland Department of Planning, who will advertise in Cecil Wigg on both April 23rd and April 30th. On May 21st, the town will hold, or the mayor commissioner will hold a public hearing. At that time, we'll take comments from the public regarding the annexation of these parcels. If there are no comments, the hearing may be closed. The resolution may be enacted by the mayor commissioners 45 days later or on July 5th, it will become effective. July 6th, the annexation resolution will be sent to clerk of the court in Cecil County Circuit Court along with the Maryland Department of Legislative Services. And on July 7th, we will amend the Chapite Town Charter, appendix to include these three parcels. I recommend that the board accept Annexation Resolution 8-1-214 for introduction.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I make motion that we accept the Annexation Resolution 8-1-2014, tax map 315, parcel 723, 724 and 726.
Second.
Probably moved in second that we accept the Annexation Resolution. All those in favor, you decide to buy?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. The motion is carried. Next item.
Next item I have is proposals from American Energy Corporation. As the board is well aware, the American Energy Corporation did a walkthrough in three of our buildings, the Elton Municipal Building, the Parks and Rec Building, the 219 North Street and the Parks and, oh, I'm sorry, the Department of Public Works. As a result of that walkthrough, they made a recommendation for an upgrade of the lights from the kermic fluorescent lights or whatever colors they are now to LED lights. And the proposal incorporates incentives by Delmarva Power. And theoretically, the Delmarva will approve these incentives and reimburse the town a large portion of the money involved in upgrading these lights to LED lights. First proposal for the town hall includes a cost of $46,380, of which utility incentives by Delmarva will amount to $41,806, annual savings estimated at $5,761 and payback in 10 months. Net project cost for the town of Elton for the transition to LED lights in this building will be $4,574. Next proposal for the Parks and Rec Building located 219 North Street, the cost of retrofitting the, or upgrading those lights, LED lights, is $4,380, of which the utility incentives are $4,044, annual savings estimated at $494, simple payback in nine months with a project, net project cost for the town of Elton $336. The last proposal includes the Elton Department of Public Works building at 209 Blue Ball Avenue on this larger building, of course, includes the LED upgrade, total cost being $21,189, of which the utility incentives by Delmarva are $17,897, annual savings of $4,218, simple payback in 11 months, net project cost at $3,292. These proposals were prepared by American Energy Corporation. I believe Mr. Marcosi is here to answer any questions the board may have regarding these If you have any questions, then my recommendation is that we proceed to accept the proposals and I'll notify American Energy Corporation to commence the work.
We have that.
I recommend that the board accept the proposals then, as I've enumerated.
Dr. Moser.
I'll make a motion to accept a proposal from American Energy Corporation.
I'll second.
You're probably moved in second that we are in acceptance of the lighting proposal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. The motion is carried. Next item, please.
Next item I have is change order number three. This is for the Bell Hill Rehabilitation, Bell Hill Water Tower Rehabilitation Project. K&amp;K Painting and Construction Company is performing the work. Change order number three involves the addition of cathodic protection for that tower and the cathodic protection cost will be $16,844. If they get that system in by the 25th, which I'm hoping, then 75% will be captured under the CDBG grant that we have. I recommend that the board authorize me to authorize K&amp;K Painting proceed with the work under change order number three, installation of cathodic protection for the Bell Hill Water Tower.
Is there a motion to accept the rehabilitation project?
Semud. Second.
Probably moved in second that we are in acceptance of the rehabilitation project. All those in favor, you just decide to buy?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. The motion is carried. Next item.
Next item I have is change order number four. K&amp;K Paint just got me this final number today. $9,000, they want to put up the letters Elton, E-L-T-O-N, on the bulk of the tank. The letters are approximately eight feet in height and will span 34 feet across the one into the other. They'll face the I-95 exit and they're black and I'm using a particular font that I like. It's called Vastaville, Vastaville old font, old face font. And KCI is recommending that we proceed, if we get it up by the 25th and three quarters of that cost, 75% will be borne under the grant by CDBG. I recommend that you proceed with this so you can get our tank labeled.
Is there a recommendation to the administrator's project that he's presented?
Semud.
Second.
Second.
Probably moved in second that we are in acceptance of the Ward Power Rehabilitation Project. All those in favor, you just decide to buy?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. The motion is carried.
That's it.
Old business, starting now with Charles Hicks, Commissioner Hicks, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Next. Old business, Mary Jo, what is happening down there to Mary Jo's where they had that steak social?
The restaurant pizza?
Yeah.
There's a new owner that's come in and he's redoing the whole building.
And what does he want to sell?
Well, it's gonna be a restaurant and he's also redoing the apartments and outside.
Okay.
And there's two storefronts there. So he's had several phone calls on the other one as well.
That's what the guy that premiered the little shop was trying to tell me something like that, not William Alveda's job. And the car shows begin in April?
This Thursday. Are we from tomorrow?
I have a question about the status of the wall of buildings. Lewis, do you have any?
Yeah, so the plan, the DMS, DMS Corporation has submitted their site plan that's coming to the planning commission, concept plan on the 12th. Once it's approved, the concept's approved and it goes through preliminary and final site plans, then I imagine the property will be completed at that point.
Things running behind or something?
No, actually, it's way on, way along.
Right now?
No business.
Okay, we have some appointments that need to be made tonight. The mayor is not here, but he left the following that we can accept them all at once, as you will. Ethics Board term expiration January 2019 will be Mary Johnson, reappointment, Richard Lemon's, new appointment, Joe Zorillo, new appointment. That's the elder of the Zorillos. On the Board of Housing Appeals term expiration July 2017, Chuck Carson, which is a new appointment, previously served on the Ethics Commission. Planning Commission term expiration February 2019, Steve Leonard, which is a new appointment, he'd also served on the Historic History Commission. Planning Commission term expiration May 2016, Keith Thompson, that's a new appointment. May I have a motion to accept these?
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried that we accept the reappointment and new appointment to the Ethics Board, the House of Appeals and Planning Commission for the one, two, three, four, five, six individuals. You have a report. Do you want to bring the report now?
We talked about the lights and, um, no.
What is it, Earl?
I have no new business.
Right now?
I have a few things. One, we did receive a letter from MML. We were one of the top five locations for the MML 2013-14 Geo Trail. Over 9,000 visitors visited and there was 49 locations in the state of Maryland and we received the top five. So that's really nice and thanks to Ed Dow for such a beautiful mailbox that I call.
Can you see that?
That was, everybody was talking about it online. The other thing I have is the yard waste pickup started last week, actually April 7th, and there is a new schedule this year for everyone, so please look on Public Works' restaurant, or, I'm sorry, Public Works' website for that information. Last year, they picked up 1.373 million pounds of yard waste, so. And I would like to thank Mr. Lemon for sending us some very, very good information. One, the article on the summary of the Philip Howard book, how he recognized the town of Elton's efforts to enforce the principles of our code and always utilize common sense when working with the public. And the other, the article from the Washington Post, I am very much in favor of pro-service contracting and I think we should really look into that to help the taxpayers and our overall budget. So I would really like to, I know our workshops are busy at this time with budget, but if we could set something up to go over these articles because they hit home and made a lot of sense. So thank you for sharing. And the other thing I do have, I just, I know it's election year, but the election is at town hall here. People are confused and asking about the firehouse. It is a town hall, so May 27th here in town hall. And that's all.
You want to thank Michelle for putting out the posters for the election.
Town hall.
Don't say, Mary Jo, would you like to thank her and let the public know what's going on?
Yeah, sure, unless you want to.
You got it.
I want to thank Michelle for thinking about putting out posts, the signs all over town telling where and when the election is so people are aware of it.
And it's actually Mark Turnbull.
And Mark Turnbull is making them again from our recycled metal, so great team.
Thank you.
Having heard all the commissioners' report, we have a public comment coming from Richard Lemon, 1031 at Main. Comes to talk about the budget.
I know you're all working on the budget right now. Those articles that I sent out, they're supposed to be thought provokers. And if you look at those like Mary Jo has, hopefully they'll be helpful in what you're doing. The other thing I wanted to add is, the workshop meeting last Wednesday, I thought was a good meeting, and I just want to ask a couple of questions. First thing on the finance budget, why aren't all the finance salaries in the finance budget?
Because a lot of what finance, as far as generating the bills for water and sewer, paying the bills for water and sewer funding, they generalize the cost of the salary that we were allocated among the general fund, water fund and sewer fund, because they do work for all three funds.
So I've got three companies, the general fund company, the water company and sewer company, so the salaries are allocated appropriately to those different companies.
Different companies.
Yeah, different companies. There are enterprise funds to them.
Okay. I see you talked about, this is also on the finance budget, you talked about the banking service charges. I know last year was $3,500. Did you say it was $3,000 this year or is it same number?
Actually, doesn't have that.
It doesn't make any difference.
It will be similar.
Doesn't make any difference. My suggestion is, and maybe you've already done this, that you go over, oh, you do all your banking with PNC, right?
And Columbia.
But is to go to PNC and ask them to waive all those charges. Now, I have an account with PNC and if you keep a certain amount of money in the account, there are no charges. And it would seem to me, the amount of money, that the amount of transactions that you run through PNC, you should be able to get no charges for what you do, like, you know, cancel.
Stop payments.
Pardon?
You know, stop payments or something.
Stop payments, stuff like that. Like if I do that, I get no charges for anything. I have to keep a certain amount of money in the account, but then they pay interest on it too. So why couldn't you do that?
Well, actually because the dollar amount we have there is well in excess, so if the federal government requires it be covered for, they're quarter of a dollar. So that is actually a cost to them because they have to fully collateralize all of our money we have there in excess of the FDIC amount. So that then becomes, I won't say a burden, but that actually added cost to them, whereas I don't know how much you have in your account, I'm not asking you that, but unless you have an excess of that, you're already covered with that as part of the federal deposit insurance corporation. So there's an added cost and they have to collateralize their assets to protect us in case of a bank failure.
Is treasury going?
Yeah, so they have to set aside and asset assets of theirs to protect their bonds in excess of the $250,000.
Isn't it worth a try to ask them? I mean, you do a lot of business.
We get charged for fees that, not that many years ago, they were just, we're not charged as far, that's kind of what the banking industry is like now. I think, I think if the bank had their druthers, we would not be walking into the lobby.
I will send a letter and ask them.
Yeah.
You want me to do it?
No, I will. I'll send a letter to PNC and ask them to waive all charges for the town. And then I'll get back to you with the response.
You can tell them to do it in my account. They know me over there. In fact, one way to do it is just walk down the street and talk to the bank manager. She's a very nice person.
Good idea.
And she's, I've talked to her, I've had her, in the little business that I run out of my home, I've had a couple charges that I didn't like and she got, she just, she has a lot of authority, just sits there and says, I'll take care of that.
Hook them, huh?
So, there you go.
Can't hurt asking, that's for sure.
Yeah. If you don't ask, you don't go anywhere, do you? Okay, so much for the finance budget. I was interested, the personnel presentation was very interesting and you talked about reimbursing for college credits and this and that, which is, I thought the presentation was really good and how you handled it is really good. My question is, do you reimburse students based on the grades that they get or they just be reimbursed?
They have to get, they have to pass the course, no D's, C and above.
The places I'm familiar with is if you get an A, it's all paid for and then a B, it's a percentage and a C, it's a percentage. And the idea is what you guys expressed in the meeting is that you want to encourage people to learn more, improve themselves, but you really want them to push really hard to do, excel in the course too. So I'm just saying, that's done in many businesses.
I won't mention any A's, but I think one person that we reimbursed has got A's.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
And I know, yeah, I'm saying that, but I just ironically has achieved very highly in that course.
I never got that many A's, but anyway.
It's always nice to get a few once in a while.
I tried. At least you can say that, but I didn't, my grandchildren all get A's. I don't know how they do it because I don't get, I never got A's.
They practice.
I don't know, maybe.
So your suggestion was to develop a scale?
That was a suggestion. That was a good way to put it, develop a scale. And that's a motivation for people to perform in the classroom. If you, you know, just like Louis said, you go down there and, you know, if you just go by, what it maybe, maybe you really haven't learned anything and benefited yourself and the town. So anyway, so much for that comment. The other comment I wanted to make also on the personnel, she kept talking about this filing cabinet, which is no big deal, but do you, do you run discs and send your files off-site for security?
No.
Because most organizations today do that and if somebody were to sabotage this building or something, your, let's say your financial records, and you may have all those names and addresses of everybody and all this and that on there. It would seem to me, I'm just making a comment, is that most businesses.
Plus cloud, love you.
Yeah. Either what they do, what I'm familiar with is they, every so many days, they run it off on a disc and they take it off a site. So if something does happen, you've got it all preserved. And as I think about it, you have police records, you have personnel records, I don't know how you, the way she explained the personnel records are on a locked file, but maybe, I'm sure there's more than that. That's all I heard.
They use a technology now called cloud, where actually a remote server. Business organizations go to off-site storage of information retrieval through a remote server. And that way, it is off-site. We don't do that, but that's.
Didn't we look into that about a year or so ago? It was very expensive.
Cloud.
Get packing up everything to it.
We haven't done that yet.
But we haven't done
Well, I say the cloud's one way to go, and that is the modern way, but the, the other way is just to run off a disc and run it over to PNC or someplace, and, and you have it over there, and, and even if you didn't do that on a, you know, a week-to-week basis, at least it would seem to me you would do all your basic information over there, so if something did happen, you'd have that covered. Now, this place is pretty well protected, being its police force is located here, but I'm just saying, it's something to think about.
Yeah, yes.
I find these meetings, these workshops very interesting, a lot of comments, I mean, it's very interesting, I've learned a lot.
Thank you.
Learned a lot from you, you know. Anyway, that's basically it. I'd say these emails I sent out, they're, that's long-term thinking, that's, Mary Jo said, when, when you have a workshop, that's the time to get into that, not right now. And I would make some comments in your workshop, if the mayor would allow me, on those subjects.
Well, see, that was gonna be my next question to you, since you have attended workshop and you got two schools of thought, that commissioners should have that time minus the public, or have you seen, do you feel as though there should be a time that, there should be some public input if you are there like you have been? Because you've already said it's ran fine, so I guess that's a good point, but on the other hand, I know you said you like to make input, so how do you see that?
Well, let's say these comments I just made, I would've made at the meeting, the workshop, but I wasn't allowed to make them, so, I mean, if I thought of it at the time, which I did, sometimes I don't think of these things till after the meeting, but it depends, but, you know, you, you can ask a question here and there. I understand that you don't want a lot of interruptions, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is, when this subject that Mary Jo's gonna bring up, I do have some ideas on that if I were to be included. That's all I'm, I'm saying. I, I don't expect to be included on a lot of stuff that I don't know anything about, but I'm And the point you're making right now is a good one, because after the conversation, even if we didn't have a lot of time for you to speak during the, the, the interaction with the board, there should be some kind of time afterward, so that you can flip on record your comments, so that we could have time to re-review what, what is really thinking or thoughts from the crowd, but that's a good point that you're making. I know it's been brought up before, Mr. Littenberry brought this up several times, and we really should look into considering that.
I would very much, if it was possible, to have Mr. Lemon on the agenda when we do discuss this at workshop, because he, we had some emails come back and forth, and he has a lot of really good ideas, and I would love to hear them with the group.
I guess I wanted to comment on that as well, especially since you were the one that generated these thought-provoking articles that, you know, we could possibly get him on the agenda to speak on that. And, and to piggyback on what Mr. Pine said, that, I think it, it seems appropriate at the end of a workshop, somewhat like we do at the regular meetings, that there would be open for some type of comment.
Well, what I'm saying at the moment is, like, when Mary Jo brings this up subject, and she's gonna carry the ball, but I, I could interject some, interject some thoughts and, you know, and ideas in there along the way, at that particular time, that's all I'm saying. It's a subject I'm interested in. Even if that doesn't work, we could probably set up a suggestion box at the end of the, it might sound crazy, but we do this work all the time. Well, you, you had a suggestion already. No, suggestion box, I'm talking about at the meeting, and maybe we can be able to deal with it that way, if that doesn't work. You could do that for your employees here in the town, where sometimes you have those suggestion boxes and they put some nasty notes in there. That's all I, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments before we report? I will allow someone to speak. If not, may I get a motion to dismiss?
Make a motion that we dismiss.